बुरी मीडिया विराट कमचेत्र, बोलने करना कोणत्वांत्र वीक प्रभा, तकिनत्व का जीवित चारणी हमाले प्रेमित ची, जय भैरव स्मृति प्रभा अनुद्दीप करून उच्चतोष ना विधारा मंदिर कोटी विरेकीटित चुकरिया आणत नाम देवगीत तल्ली विधास्त्रण हमाले रणित चारण मंदिरा चलिस्कर चुनाव इत्तो कोटी गुप्पा कोटी दयन विकाय करण सांची लेल्या वधों मध्ये त्राणे उपाध्यार रबरतर का, मलिचला अहला, रेष्ट्रमय धारण नमाहोजायत मलिच सिद्ध पत्थरला आणव मोहालो अंदरे बुढ़ा मदरपस्तर नाहीत आणले जस्तो चुनाव देवगीत नाहीत नाहीत आस्तर कपैकी सुचुनाव परागिल मेळ नाहीत नाहीत मारे परिस्थितीलो बिमुकटका मोहाले दर्शणी प्रेम परितल्ली, वाक्य चेत्र मेळो जीवपदेश लो नाहीत आणले जस्तो चुनाव विधास्त्रे कस्ता बावतपच्चणी एर रेत्या मारे, देवगीत तल्ली कोण्याली सिंह दिग्गी पीट्र असे, बुकुबस्तान पार्ट नाहीत ब्रदर सुदीचारा निची माय बस्ता
प्लीज वर्न आम्ही वेळे निकाली तो सिद्धार्थ एकदा येत निर्णय फॉर नंबर फाई वेळा निकाला तो आपण बोलून देत जो वन, तू, फाई, आणि सिक्स हे आपण जाण्याच्या नंबर वाणी तालंपोल अनोख्या मायनार आयरानी तारोना सर्वसारा
आणि गण
वाणी तालंपोल तुलाते तो गोपनी तो बे तुली तारे गोपन तुलाते तो गोपनी तो बे तुली तारे गोपन तुलिंची वाणी जी तानामार तुलिंची वाणी जी
आपण एक वसंत देणार नाही आपण इशारे देणार नाही
वाणी तालंपोल अनोख्या मायनार आयरानी तारोना सर्वसारा निवर्ण वाणी तालंपोल तुलाते नाहीत तो गोपनी तुलाते नाहीत तो बे तुलाते नाहीत तो गोपनी तुलाते नाहीत तो बे तुली तारे तो गोपन तुली तारे तो गोपन तुली तारी तुलाता मायनार जी वाणो श्याम तारो नो
वेस्तार नाही वेस्तार नाही
तुलाता मायनार जी वाणो श्याम तारो नो तारो वाणी पाना ज्या तारो वाणी पाना ज्या तारो बे जी जे वाणी तालंपोल नंबर वर्त फॉर नंबर सात आम्ही वेळा निकाला तो वेळा निकाला तो नापिया मायना येतु काहू वेला जो त्रामो निविच्छिन्न रचना कई देवाच्या तो गोपन
वाला माय
युगे सिना उपाध्यार मुकई देवा तो गोपन तो गोपन नापिया मायना येतु काहू पापा तिला उलायो तो गोपन कई तार पापा तिला उलायो तो गोपन कालची तिली देवानी तयालो नाही नाथा आशयं कोणती तिली देवानी तयालो नाही नाथा आशयं कोणती तिली नापिया मायना येतु काहू ओकचना समयामो आशिंच्या गाली विघम ओकचना समयामो आशिंच्या गाली विघम आउदयं माचिती विली देवा तुम्हालो ने जीविंच्या तकई आउदयं माचिती विली देवा तुम्हालो ने जीविंच्या तकई नापिया मायना येतु काहू ओकचना समयामो नेवा निकाली विच्छिती ओकचना समयामो नेवा निकाली विच्छिती शोधा आउदयानी चाहू देवा निन्नो ने नशिंच्या तकई शोधा आउदयानी चाहू देवा निन्नो ने नशिंच्या तकई नापिया मायना येतु काहू ईदला मो ने पारोना नीवणे येतु काहू ईदला मो ने पारोना नीवणे येतु काहू एल्लाह पुरुष ने पारित देवा नायन्नो वसिंच्या एल्लाह पुरुष ने पारित देवा नायन्नो वसिंच्या नी प्रदना सहवास मो मंती रासम्प्रोत्सिदी नी प्रदना सहवास मो नी संतिल यानंत मो देवा तुम्हालो ने नसकीती नी संतिल यानंत मो देवा तुम्हालो ने नसकीती नापिया मायना येतु काहू वेला जो त्रामो निविच्छिन्न रचना कई देवा तो गोपन तो गोपन युगे सिना उपाध्यार मुकई देवा तो गोपन तो गोपन नापिया मायना येतु काहू आपण बघत नाही सामान्य बघत नाही हलेले पाडेका ताऊनी पोले आणि आणि हमाले कसे आहे वन, त्रिक, फाई, आणि सिक्स हे आपण जाण्याच्या नंबर अवतरित वो तो आहे आपण जाण्याच्या
आपण जाण्याच्या हल्लेल्या पारित ताऊन्नो कोणी आये विदिवितायत गोपन देवी संपारिंची विदिवितायत गोपन देवी संपारिंची माहिमा निकेलो प्राण विदिवितातीना प्राचन माहिमा निकेलो प्राण विदिवितातीना प्राचन निन्नो ने कोणी आये हल्लेल्या पारित ताऊन्नो कोणी आये हल्लेल्या पारित ताऊन्नो कोणी आये
हल्लेल्या पारित ताऊन्नो कोणी आये आपण तन 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 हल्ले ताऊन्नो निहित ताऊन्नो येथे नाहीत ताऊन्नो तन 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 हल्लेल्या पारित आ
तम्मा बघेस
विदिवितायत गोपन अंत
नाव विचित अद्विती विरोधी निर्वाचन विद्वान
माइकले देखणार
या सांगी वर सोबत वेळे बोलण्याच्या
आणि आतील वित्त वस्त्र वित्त लोग राहिल वस
आणि वाच वाच या तुल्ही पुरायत वेळे जांतले पाच या तुल्ही लेखील चेंज चेंज निहित गोरों मध्ये या मारू देतो तो गानी या तिनी या मारू देख या तिनी
फाई मार्च
विरुवनो निनु येणवायन नाहीन अभयमो संगिन देवा अभयमो संगिन देवा विरुवनो निनु येणवायन नाहीन अभयमो संगिन देवा अभयमो संगिन देवा तेरा मुरूद्दी नो केचे चिचे दूर मो भापायो केची नया तेरा मुरूद्दी नो केचे चिचे दूर मो भापायो केची नया पापा भापायो हे आदम तेरी अदरली ची मार पापा भापायो हे अदरली ची मार तेरी अदरली ची मार विरुवनो निनु येणवायन नाही
यूएसपी काही यूएसपी केवळ तल तल अभयमो संगिन देवा यूएसपी
विरुवनो निनु येणवायन नाही अभयमो संगिन देवा Abhayamotanina, Deva.
You're not going to start. Oh, dear. Oh, dear, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
In the part, why, 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 why? In the part, it's wrong. The part, not the right. For, why, or what? I already talked about it. Not the reason. Now, we read about what? The wrong thing. Thank you, brother. Ma, jee, vora, vee. Ma, prabhu, vora, vee.
Let me see the last one. A wrong one, yeah?
We do, vura, vee. Ma, vora, vee.
Oh, very, very good.
Ma, jee, vura, vee. Ma, vora, vee. Tara, tara, mula, tu, vee. Pa, ni, va, ta, ta, ra, mula, vee. Tara, tara, mula, tu, vee. Pa, ni, va, ta, ta, ra, mula, vee. Tutula, kut, lill, chedamoh. Hallelujah, Father! Tutula, kut, lill, chedamoh. Hallelujah, Father! Ma, jee, vura, vee.
I think I'm going to go to the next one.
We do, vura, vee. Ma, jee, vura, vee. Kuh, ni, vee. Pa, ni, va, ta, ta, ra, mula, vee. Tara, tara, mula, ku, ni, vee. Pa, ni, va, ta, ta, ra, mula, vee. Tutula, kut, lill, chedamoh. Hallelujah, Father! Tutula, kut, lill, chedamoh. Hallelujah, Father! Ma, jee, vura, vee. Tere, dhira, hara, lo. Papa, malina, pukadi, giti. Tere, dhira, hara, lo. Papa, malina, pukadi, giti. Pa, ne, bha, mula, nu, bha, vi. Ba, vi, tra, para, ti, vi. Pa, ne, bha, mula, nu, bha, vi. Ba, vi, tra, para, ti, vi. Pa, vi, mo, cha, kut, la, vi. Tara, tara, mula, ku, ni, vee. Pa, ni, va, ta, ta, ra, mula, vee. Tara, tara, mula, ku, ni, vee. Pa, ni, va, ta, ta, ra, mula, vee. Tutula, kut, lill, chedamoh. Hallelujah, Father! Tutula, kut, lill, chedamoh. Hallelujah, Father! Ma, jee, vura, vee. Ki, grup, ka, ni, kara, mula, to. Ra, ke, chi, ka, pa, di, di. Ki, grup, ka, ni, kara, mula, to. Ra, ke, chi, ka, pa, di, di. Kantri, ma, di, ni, ka, ni, ka, di. Ve, ma, ko, thi, ka, di, di. Kantri, ma, di, ni, ka, ni, di. Ve, ma, ko, thi, ka, di, di. Ma, para, ma, kantri, vi, ni, vee. Tara, tara, mula, ku, ni, vee. Pa, ni, va, ta, ta, ra, mula, vee. Tara, tara, mula, ku, ni, vee. Pa, ni, va, ta, ta, ra, mula, vee. Tutula, kut, lill, chedamoh. Hallelujah, Father! Tutula, kut, lill, chedamoh. Hallelujah, Father! Ma, jee, vura, vee. Pa, hi, ma, pra, bhava, pu, to. Para, na, pu, to, gel, di, di. Pa, hi, ma, pra, bhava, pu, to. Para, na, pu, to, gel, di, di. Pa, hi, ma, ro, va, pu, de, tut, a, hey. Pa, gu, vi, ja, ya, mua, di, di. Pa, hi, ma, ro, va, pu, de, tut, a, hey. Pa, gu, vi, ja, ya, mua, di, di. Pa, ni, ri, chana, yu, ni, vee. Tara, tara, mula, ku, ni, vee. Pa, ni, va, ta, ta, ra, mula, vee. Tara, tara, mula, ku, ni, vee. Pa, ni, va, ta, ta, ra, mula, vee. Tutula, kut, lill, chedamoh. Hallelujah, Father! Tutula, kut, lill, chedamoh. Hallelujah, Father! Ma, jee, vura, vee. Ti, ma, di, ra, ka, pu, di, to. Pa, mo, drup, di, para, di, di. Ti, ma, di, ra, ka, pu, di, to. Pa, mo, drup, di, para, di, di. Tara, ni, ma, di, ra, mua, ro. Te, va, di, pa, di, di. Tara, ni, ma, di, ra, mua, ro. Te, va, di, pa, di, di. Ma, ma, di, ra, mua, ni, vee. Tara, tara, mula, ku, ni, vee. Pa, ni, va, ta, ta, ra, mula, vee. Tara, tara, mula, tu, vee. Pa, ni, va, ta, ta, ra, mula, vee. Hallelujah, Father! Tutula, kut, lill, chedamoh. Hallelujah, Father! Ma, jee, vura, vee. Pa, na, yesu, thi, ri, ki, va, tu, ro. Re, pa, pa, tu, na, ma, re, mu. Pa, na, yesu, thi, ri, ki, va, tu, ro. Re, pa, pa, tu, na, ma, re, mu. Prabhu, ni, poli, on, domo. Amatya, ra, tar, i, domo. Prabhu, ni, poli, on, domo. Amatya, ra, tar, i, domo. Prabhu, yesu, tu, ni, ja, mu, domo. Tara, tara, mula, tu, vee. Pa, ni, va, ta, ta, ra, mula, vee. Tara, tara, mula, ku, ni, vee. Pa, ni, va, ta, ta, ra, mula, vee. Tutula, kut, lill, chedamoh. Hallelujah, Father! Tutula, kut, lill, chedamoh. Hallelujah, Father! Ma, jee, vura, vee. Pa, vora, vee. Ma, jee, vura, vee.
Shall we pray? Our loving heavenly father, our gracious and wonderful king god, we bow on thy presence at this hour of the day, worship thee, adore thee, magnify thy glorious and wonderful name. For thou'nes done great things for us, bear up. We are glad, though we are unworthy. Thou hast blessed us with all wonderful blessings in christ jesus in heavenly places. We thank thee for... One day we are going to be with thee forever and ever. For the Lord, I will come again to receive thee unto myself. So, nor with great expectation, we are waiting for the coming of the lord jesus christ. Thank thee the ways thou preparing us for thy coming, so that when thou wilt come, who may be found faithful in thy sight to be with thee forever and ever. Thank thee for all those who could come thus far. Pray for those who may be at on the ways. Bring them soon into our midst. Bless our fellowship together. Thank thee for all those who are praying for us. Let thy grace and time power all human frailties. Help us to experience thy presence. Help us to hear thy voice. Committing ourselves in the loving hand, expecting great things to happen in our midst as we trust thee, salute thee, follow thee. Pray with thanksgiving in jesus precious name. Amen. Shall we turn to Psalm ninety verse one? Psalm ninety, verse one. Lord, thou hast been our dwelling place in all generations. Lord, thou hast been our dwelling place in all our generations. In all generations. So, this is the verse based on which this song was composed. And I was inspired by one song, which was composed before I was born. It is printed there in our songbook. Our guru jesus garu, every time he used to announce this song, very often we used to sing that song. A part of Guru Thakusada. Prabhu, atara, taramula, nun, di. Ma, kun, ni, va, sa, sala, mu, ni, vee. Yuga, yuga, mula, ku, nu, ni, vee. De, vura, vee. De, vura, vee. De, vura, vee. De, vura, vee. Yuga, yuga, mula, ku, nu, ni, vee. De, vura, vee. De, vura, vee. De, vura, vee. De, vura, vee. So, this was the thing, song which inspired me to compose this song. I wanted to highlight that tara, taramula, ku, ni, vee. Ma, ni, va, sa, taramu, ni, vee. If he had not been faithful unto our pitharulu, our... In the past generations, our four fathers, would not have been here. God has indeed been faithful unto all our four fathers. My grandfather, my grandfather, he came, he went, he went. He did something, he did something. He did something, he did something. But, one thing is very sure. If we are alive today, it is because God has indeed been faithful unto our four fathers. He went. You know what I mean? I know my grandfather. Jeremiah, he was a pastor, Kanakam Jeremiah. And he was a pastor, over the after dark. Janagam, I am native place. I came from... Ah, I... I went to the church. I came to the church, I came from the church. That is where they were serving the lot. I know what I mean. My grandfather, he went to the church. And him, he went to the church. I, my grandfather, I know that. I know that. We do not know our pitharulu. But, one thing we are sure. God has been faithful unto them. That is what I understand. That only prompted me to compose this song again, though it is based on the same verse, which was composed the earlier song. Tara, taramula, ku, ni, vee. I want to highlight that song. That is why I put that while composing. I picture the word. Tara, taramula, ku, ni, vee. Ma, ni, va, sa, taramu, ni, vee. That is what we should be always conscious. God has been faithful unto our four fathers. That is why we are preserved today. When we are in the world, we are grateful. We are grateful. We are grateful. Our spirit is changed. We should ever be grateful unto the Lord. He said, "Prabhu, help." "Oh, Lord, help that my gratefulness to thee may be multiplied day after day." And he prayed. "Prabhu, I have a question." "I have a question." "I have a question." "I have a question." We are grateful to him that will keep us in good stead in our spiritual life. Why children of israel murmured and grumbled all those party long years under the leadership of moses? It is because they very soon forgot what lord has done unto them. In other words, I know that God has delivered them from the bondage of Egypt, bondage of Pharaoh and all that. But, when it came to Red Sea, they started murmuring. "Why, don't you have graves there? Why are we have to die here?" So, they lost that faith and confidence in god. So, the past experience of god's faithfulness that we enjoyed should give us assurance for the future. But, children of israel could not, you know, have that because they very soon forgot. Forgetfulness is the main thing in the children of israel. A kind of forgetful... I remember it. The forgetting. Forgetfulness. Because, it is a part of life. "I forgot." "I forgot." Ah? I know that. I went to the church. He did research on forgetfulness. And he wrote a very big book on forgetfulness. But, finally, he forgot where he kept the book. So, we should not forget. Every little thing lord has done unto us, we should acknowledge. I understand. He has taught us. Because, he has taught us. He has taught us. Our lives are changed. When he came to us, we were encouraged. When he encouraged us, he gave us a path. So, Johanan Swarta. Johanan Swarta, in the Jam. John's Gospel, chapter eight, verse twenty-nine. "And he that sent me is with me; the father hath not left me alone; for I do always those things that please him." "I do always those things that please him." Always. 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 You know, continuously, consistently, we should do his will. That means, I am saying. Eliza, on mount Carmel, when he prayed before the fire could come and accept the offerings that he has offered, he said these words in first Kings, chapter eighteen, verse thirty-six in his prayer. "Let these people know that I am thy servant and that I have done all these things at thy word." That is the greatest testimony of Eliza. That is why, when he prayed, fire came down in answer to the prayers in the sight of the people of god and also the army of Wahaam and Aham and also those prophets. It did not happen somewhere in the corner. Publicly, it happened. Fire came down on actual... It is not an ordinary thing. It is mind-bowling to think how a man prays, fire comes from heaven. That is why we have to give due value to the words in the bible that will keep us in very good stead in following him and serving him and having faith on him. So, Eliza could say this word. So, far, lord, whatever I have done, I have done at thy word. Do you understand? "Prabhu, my life, I have done something. I have done something. I have done something. I know that you are talking to me." Chapalim. We cannot give such a testament because many times we do, we think, hey, yentimiru, hey, Babu. Hey, yem jastranu? Ah, okay. Yentri jastranu? Then, okay, first when we say, listen to it, okay? When we are saying, listen to it. When we turn the scripture, then you turn to scripture, okay? Otherwise you miss what we are saying. You know, at the end of the day, you will hear some sound. Sound you have heard, the word you have missed, message you missed. That is why I would honestly request you, young and old, when we are saying, listen to it. When you are referring to the scripture, you refer to the scripture. That is not good, you know? So, we have to obey him and we have to perform his will in order that God may honor our faith, God may answer our prayers, we should be grateful to him. We should never forget what Lord has done, that is a very important thing. Children of Israel, while they have murmured, while they have grumbled all the way, party long years, they troubled Moses. But why? It is because very soon they forgot what Lord has done. Great thing he has done. They were delivered from the bondage of Egypt, then the Red Sea got divided in front of them, and they walked where? Not only they got divided, but God dried up, dried up their, you know, ground on which they have to walk. He does not want the children of Israel should have inconvenience in walking and going onto the Red Sea. And the fact that they walked speaks of their confidence and great trust in God. You know, they did not, I thought, today's believer, if he is there among them, so that is how they had, but very soon they forgot that. Then after crossing Red Sea, what happened? Mara. Mara, they started grumbling. Then, like that, adugaduguna, wallu, maripan, gurugutu, uchiraru, jerkasanthum, galegane devudu. God of long suffering sustained them all those forty years, unemployment, no ujjagam. Ujjagam, sajagam. But yet, God was faithful unto them, they sustained them. They were fed from, you know, heavenly things, and they complained, why we have no non-vegetarian? Why you have to eat only vegetarian? Then God gave non-vegetarian also. Whatever God wants, they gave, God gave them. But yet they were murmuring and, you know, grumbling lot all through, under the rule of Moses. But when it comes to under the rule of Joshua, I find they are transformed people, totally changed. What has happened? I, I business, I believe, think that when Moses died, they mourned for thirty days. In their mourning, they would have confessed, oh, Lord, forgive us, we have done a lot of wrong to our leader. Moses, I believe, they have confessed, they have repented. That is why when Mo, Joshua took over, they were disciplined a lot. Three days God kept them in front of the river, Jordan, flowing to the brims of the banks of the river. Never complained, they have to cross the river, but he is not asking them to bring wooden logs, make, even chapramla. Three days they were just watching, yet they did not grumble. That is how they were transformed people under the leadership of Joshua. And Jericho God let what, hemani? Six days, six times, seven days, seven times, they just went around, that's all. By faith, we read in Hebrews, chapter eleven, verse thirty, walls of Jericho fell down. By faith, merely by faith. That is the, the great mind-bongling thing to see how such sturdy walls. And the walls there were houses. Rahab's house was on the walls of Jericho, such sturdy walls, they just collapsed in front of them. That is the power of the living God. We see the manifestation of the power of God in those situations. So God is powerful, it is because of our weakness, it is because of our, you know, wrong conception of what Lord has done, we, sometimes we also grumble, murmur, tend to go away from the path of God. So we have to trust him, trust him and do always. This is the testimony of the Lord Jesus Christ. Hemanadu, John's Gospel, eight, twenty-nine. And he that sent me is with me; the Father hath not left me alone, for I do always those things that please him. This should be our testimony. Entery, I do always those things that please him. Then God will do wonders, I tell you. I am telling about my personal experience. If you decide to do the will of the Lord, in spite of all the difficulties that you have, God will answer your prayers, God will honor your faith. You will see miracles happening in, in front of you. God gave a promise to Brother Bakshing when he started the ministry in Jawasawa. In nineteen forty-one, they entered in that Jawasawa hall, you know, that premises, very big place. Very big place Jawasawa, much bigger than the Hebron and the Herman together, anta pellad. So, God gave him a promise in Exodus thirty-four, verse ten, that fragment. I will do marvels, I will do marvels, as I quote Raskolnikov, I will do marvels. Exodus thirty-four, verse ten. With that promise, he entered into Jawasawa. Then what has happened? This promise has been fulfilled in its totality. It is only human failure that there are all problems everywhere, but on his part, he has done his work. Hundreds and hundreds and thousands of people have been saved, and not only the number of the people increased, the number of the churches increased. Nowhere in the history of the world that in one town, in one city, there are six hundred plus assemblies are there. In Hyderabad, second about together, six hundred plus assemblies, each assembly has got the capacity of five hundred plus, and each assembly has got their sister assemblies. It is the marvelous thing, nowhere, if somebody could put it in the, you know, Jenny's book of regards, they should do it. Nowhere in the world we have got such assemblies, and that too, not from any other denomination. It is only Brother Bakshing's work, because it is Lord's work. Because people obeyed God and people obeyed God servants, and there was great joy and there was great harmony, you know? Other people drawn from different backgrounds, they all came and served the Lord. Bijapal composed one song, Lemmu Chejerilum, landpana. You know, Isaiah sixty, verse one, Brother Bakshing had been preaching on that for quite some time. Then Brother Bijapal came, and he was there with him, he was translating. He wrote, composed that song in early sixties. Hempanthani, Lemmu Chejerilum, land of Versundu, which I like it very much. Wonderful song. You know, people drawn from various backgrounds, they were all put together in harmony as one family of God. What do we read in Episans, chapter two, verse nineteen? We have been introduced into the family of God, household of God. Hindi me haite wonderful expression, Parmeswar ka gharaana, parmeswar ka gharaana me humko joddiya gaya hai. We have been introduced into the family of God, where he is our everlasting father and we are his people. Even when the Lord taught the disciples how to pray, what did he say? Matthew's Gospel, chapter six, verse nine. You pray like this, what? Our Father in heaven. He did not say, my Father in heaven. Our Father in heaven, that is a very important expression. Our Father in heaven, that means we have fellowship with the fellow saints on this earth, and at the same time, together we have fellowship with the Lord. That is why we say, our Father in heaven. We cannot be away from the awareness, I can call it, you know, togetherness, fellowship. We should be intact, bound by the love of the Lord and the power of the Lord and the grace of the Lord. It is only then we can serve together for the glory of God. Now shall we turn to First Thessalonians. First Thessalonians, chapter two, ten, eleven and twelve. All of us, together we shall read. First Thessalonians, chapter two, ten, eleven and twelve. Young and old alike, those who can read. First Thessalonians, chapter two, ten, eleven and twelve. Your witnesses and God also, how holyly and justly, unblameably, we behaved ourselves among you that believe. As you know, how we exhorted and comforted and charged every one of you as father does his children, that you would walk worthy of God, who has called you unto his kingdom and glory. May our blessed Savior bless this portion for us. We are considering one thought, walk worthy of God. I said, walk means progress, that means Christian life is a life of progress. How much progress we have made, that is a, a question that we have to ask ourselves. After I have been saved, that means, first of all, have you been saved? Many times, there is a thing in English taken for granted. Sometimes what happens, when you come to the fellowship, as you sing together with others, as you listen to the word and as you have fellowship with the people, those who are not born again also think they are born again because they are in the, you know, the warm, the fellowship of the saints. Born again means what? There shouldn't be a day and a time when you have confessed your sins. Was there a day? Was there a day when you have confessed your sins before the Lord? When you know, when you are convicted that you are a sinner and you have sinned against God and men in this world, how come you not cry? Whenever a culprit is caught by the police, when he is interrogated, he skips a lot of questions he will not answer. But finally, the police have got such methods, you know, third grade, three, whatever grade, you know, some methods are there, by which he is forced to confess. Then I have read always in the newspapers, finally, finally, he broke down and confessed. He did not say, finally, he laughed and confessed. Tears should roll down on your cheek, that has happened to me, even at the age of thirteen. You know, vichchubijat abadalu, hintro abadalu, friends ro abadalu, akkar banna cheating, yani ishaw. When I was convicted, I confessed, how did I confess? I cried at eleven o'clock in the night, I remember still in December twenty-third, nineteen fifty-three. I confessed, I cried. You know, if you have been convicted, I want to tell you, listen to this very carefully. If you are convicted, you will cry, you will cry, without that, you are not saved at all. That is why those people have not confessed, they are not remorseful believer, remorseful people, that is why they are the people who create problems in the church, those who are not properly, you know, converted, properly saved. Do not think that you are, you know, taken for granted that you are coming to the church, you are singing some songs and you are saved. There has to be a day, there has to be a time when you have confessed your sins. As there is a date of birth, when you are born into this world, so also you will have a date of birth when you are born again. Was there a day? Maybe you have forgotten, that is a different thing, but there should be a day and time when you have confessed your sins. Did you cry and confess? We also commit a lot of mistakes in Hebron or many places, they give altar call. Ah, altar call, isane, ah, those who are confessed, put up your hand and, and then decision court are given. They are called rightly decision court, that is not born again declaration. Decision, that means they have decided that they have to, they have accepted Christ, they have decided. And that decision should be, that resolve should be put into action. Repeat after me a confessional prayer. We are misguiding the people of God, I told in Jawasawa and also in Hebron. We are misguiding people. In a way, I also said, we are cheating people, they think they are saved. When the baptism form is filled up, they say, how, how were you born again? By what word you are convicted? Answer is, I have put up my hand at the time of altar call. Are you? And I have taken, some people, I have taken decision court. Are you, by taking decision court, you are saved, ah? Bible, humnata, thurani. Very simple verse, first, first John. So what I am saying is, we should be very clear on the basics. Basics law, manu, clear, gunal. The first John, chapter one, verse nine. If we confess, if we confess, when you will be confessed? When will you confess? When you are convicted. If we confess our sins, he is faithful and just to forgive us our sins and to cleanse us from all unrighteousness. You see, and verse seven also. But if he walked in the light as he is in the light, we have fellowship one another and the blood of Jesus Christ son transcends us from all sins. So there has to be a day and time when you have confessed your sins. I am not trying to discourage you, I am talking about the reality of life. Once one God servant, who had been serving the Lord for so many years, almost he has come to the retiring stage. Once he came to me, while I was in Hebron, you know, looking after the entire ministry. He came to my uncle, I want to share something very important, a secret of my life. Ah, yes, yes, bato chappu, ayano gururade, he is from Guru. Ochi, I want to tell you. Uncle, you will be surprised, I came to the Lord, I became a Christian, real Christian. I am saved after seven years of my service as the servant of God. So, attati jaragudu. Adhara, ingoga, instance, second year, Rajasthan, we had special meetings. I went there, most of the people are Air Force people. Four days meetings, we talked about salvation, baptism, anta. Ayano, a couple, young couple, they came and said, uncle, in Delhi, in some church we were going, there we were baptized. That baptism has no value at all. Ah, yeah, the actual, you know, fragment, repentance precedes baptism. Adhramisunadi, repentance precedes baptism. When Peter gave the word in Acts, the apostle, chapter two, verse thirty-seven, it is written, they were pricked in their heart when he gave that message. When they are pricked in their heart, they said like this. So, when Peter asked, Peter was asked, men and brethren, what shall we do? And Peter, hemani, repent and be baptized. That means repentance precedes baptism. Was there a time, was there a day when you have really repented of your sins? If not, you are not saved, I am telling you, don't be deceived. There should be a day, even now we can confess, even tonight we can confess. O Lord, forgive me. And, and, but there should be repentance, etla, tears of repentance. So, marumanse, nu kanu, punnitte, then again, again, I am saying, there should have been a day when you have cried unto the Lord. Lord, I must not forgive me. I was born again, nineteen fifty-three, December twenty-third, eleven o'clock in the night, I cried. I confessed, and I want to tell you, second Corinthians five seventeen has become a reality in my life. Overnight, I developed distaste for all my friends, most of them Muslim friends. I was a ring leader for them. I developed distaste, no desire to meet them, no desire to play with them, no desire to go with them, no. Early morning, I get up and run to the house of God. That is the change. There would be a change. crystal change, very clear change. There should be, there would be a demarcation. In ancients, we used to have march fast. आ, इंसेक्ट नंटरु, तेचल नंटरु नंटरे, ये वार, left, right, left, right, नंटर इत्तोपोत्तु नंटर Then suddenly you will say, पीछे, मूढ़ नंटर The platoon which is going in this direction, changes its direction in the opposite direction. There is a change of direction. If you are born again, there would be a change of direction in your life. There will be a change of your attitude. Then your all old friends may be there, but you will have no desire to go and meet them. Now, many people have got Facebook, faceless Facebook. आ Who are those people in your list? Are they born again people? I know some people in Delhi, they don't have any born again people in their list. All worldly people only. Relatives and worldly people. वो काम इस्ता, टी जीस कोटकारी, स्टैब जीस बम्बिस्को जाली येवन एनी इम्पॉर्टेंट अदिवन आ, पिल्ली, आर चेडला कुर्चिदे, अज्जस्त तिस वंदे वाला, मम्मी डायु बम्बिस्को एन्टी जन्ता, wasteful, wasteful nonsense, I call it. अरे, why don't you take the Bible and read? They don't have time to read all those things. But they have, you know, these, these things. So, मार्मुनसु पुद्दा लक्षणाल गादी So, we have to think about ourselves. Really, there should be a change. Or, that has, I, I could see that. I used to go to run to the house of God. I want to dwell, I want to be in the portals of the house of God, always as David's desire was. Even now I have the same desire. But in Delhi, we don't have a place. Yeah, you also don't have a place. I, we gather in a school. There also, we gather in a school. But Gurdur, we used to have a prayer house, मंदिर मंदिरी Then pray a prayer house, अंते Then I used to run in the morning. I used to clean up the whole premises. And, and I used to do कल्यापु, अंति दलसमिकु पट्टनवासली दिलीदिरे, पल्टितोरो दिली पैर दिस्को नची, ई चेतुतो पैर दिस्को नची, बक्केट नेलालो बुल्सी, कल्पी कल्याप जलियों Entire premises आ, आसर्था, अप्राण, आदिनालो टैप्लुंडे गादु, बावुलुंडे डी बावुलुंडे जुनीलु चेरी, आ, शारम माने वो काकुन्ने डी आ, बिंदलु गंगालो निबर्दरला दान लंतन ने निम्पियों अंतन निम्पेसी Then I used to run home, take bath, take the school books and run to the school. At the age of thirteen. That was a desire, अंते आलांत मार्पु, that will be explicitly seen. People can see. People can see it. Are they saying that, that there is a change in your life? I was doing my eighth class, eighth class, some class. I was studying in Suhma Dhriram, Kattamandhistik. I used to go, I think I mentioned yesterday in that book, you know, Bible, गिवल एंडिबिट्को Bible, full Bible. अंदर यमनार ने, जयाकी, पिच्चबटिंद नान पिच्चबटिंदी, वो योरु तो माटराडम लेदु वो यो तो मोल कुर्चन, बिबल दु कुण्टान्डर He always goes into a corridor and he studies. Earlier, whenever there is a gap, you know, लिजनुंटे, फुटबाल आठोडु, he was playing football. Now, he is not mingling with anybody. He is going there, studying, येदु पिच्चबटिंद मार्टिकाने वाडु That news spread to the headmaster. Headmaster ने, पिच्चनाडु एम रा, नी पिच्चबटिंद नान ने Hey, I heard that you have become mad. What is it? He reminded me. I said, I took out Bible from the bag and showed him. Oh, oh, ई पिच्चबटिंद नान ई कन्नर Oh, you have become mad of this book? अन्न Yes, sir, अन्न अंते, ये मन लायन So, there was change. As that change took place, then praise the Lord. If it has not taken place, ask the Lord, even now you can ask. "Lord, forgive me. I am still a sinner. I have not confessed to my sins." निदंग मार्पन एरुम नाल आ, वचन दाव्यम अल्लाह अजिजर्गिन नानु सूसकोण जर्गपुते Then you have to confess your sins afresh. Then Lord will forgive you. Second Corinthians, chapter five, verse seventeen. Therefore, if any man be in Christ, he is a new creature. All things are past away. Behold, all things are become new. That newness should happen. That newness should happen. That is a very, very important thing. That has happened to some of us here, I believe. That is why we are here. So, those who do not have that experience, kindly accept the Lord as your personal Lord and Savior. Fulfill God's word, Romans, chapter ten. Whatever I have said, it is based on the word of God. I have not said it out of my head. Romans, ten, nine and ten. Here is a simple principle as to how one can be saved. Romans, chapter ten, nine and ten. Shall we all read together? Romans, chapter ten, nine and ten. Romans, Patricus, Padre Ajayam, Tomi Padre Vachanav. That if thou shalt confess with thy mouth the Lord Jesus and shalt believe in thine heart that God has raised him from the dead, thou shalt be saved. For with the heart man believeth unto righteousness and with mouth confession is made unto salvation. With the mouth confession is made. Did that take place? Then praise the Lord. If not, you know, take care that you have to be saved. You know, people who are born in Christian homes and also those who are born in elders' home or God servants' home, they think they are saved because they are on that umbrella of spiritual life. Umbrella of that spiritual atmosphere. They think they are saved. But parents have to make sure that they are saved. You know, otherwise, you are misleading your children. There has to be a day, there has to be a time. As you have date of birth, so also you will have a date of birth. One brother, who composed many songs in Nepali, which were translated into Telugu, Hindi and other languages, he met me in Kalimpong one day. He was distributing sweets. That was twenty-fifth of December. Nobody will wish each other Merry Christmas. Seven thousand people would be there, nobody will wish. Because that is not the date when he was born, who don't have date. So, आ, अपिलोडु, स्वीट बास देचांद्री स्वीटल बांसुन रारो He came to my cabin, my room, he said, "Uncle, uncle, sweets." I said, "What is the occasion?" He said, "Uncle, today is my birthday, अन्न And he said, "No, no, uncle, not that birthday. Today is the day when I was born again." He says, "I celebrated that day." What a wonderful time, you know, I had with him. He is Subha Subha, who composed that song in Nepali, which is being sung in all the world, even in other languages also. हरदाई भरीको धान्यवाल चडायराहंचु प्रभूलाय हरदाई भरीको धान्यवाल चडायराहंचु प्रभूलाय वन तिलुला कुंदी, तिल्सा? कोर्ना कुर्ड आयन राजिन्ना पाटा You know, पाटला राजिन्ड And many Sinifil people also wanted him. He got very good voice. He refused. He said, "I want to use my voice for the glory of God in the church and जिप्र He is still there in Kathmandu. You know So, if there is a change in your life, that will manifest itself in your behavioral pattern. People would cheat that there is a change in your life. Did your people at home testify that you are born again? That there is a change in your life? Once, one sister gave her name for baptism in Delhi. That very night, his father, who is one of the elders in our church, very good jamm of a person, very good believer, he phoned me up, said, "Uncle, my daughter, Retapias, gave her name for baptism. Please do not baptize her. She claims that she is saved, but I don't see any fruits of repentance in her life." योर अन्न ने नादी Sanjri Jipranadi He is a very sincere man. Then I said, "Okay, brother." Then we did not her, then we called her and told her also, wait for some time. And then afterwards, after many years, we baptized her. Then there were fruits of repentance. So, there should be fruits of repentance. There should be good works. There should be change in life. You know, you will have the mind of Jesus. You know, let this mind be in you, which was in Jesus. यक्कलस्सन नादी It is only after you are born again, as you work out your salvation, according to Philippians, chapter two, verse twelve, when you work out your salvation with fear and trembling, you will get that image emerged in your life slowly and steadily. Christ mind, Christ attitude. That is what you should have. That is Christian life. Who is a Christian? Christ in you and you in Christ. इन्को कुमार सौरम, Romans, chapter six. Romans, chapter six, verse eleven. Romans, chapter six, verse eleven. There we have the definition of Christian life. Likewise, reckon you also yourself to be dead Indian unto sin and alive unto God. मंदिरी क्रिश्चियन लाइफ Dead unto sin and alive unto God. That is a natural Christian life. So, like that, if you are a Christian, praise the Lord. Otherwise, you should repent of your sins even now. Tonight, when you go home, nobody will repeat, you know, operator prayer, that is not right. When you are convicted, who will teach the child how to confess her mistake or his mistake? Automatically comes, when there is repentance, automatically words will come. Nobody need to say, "Prayer, we are misleading people." Never do that. Like that, many people have been saved without such confessional prayer also. So, we have to come to the knowledge of the Lord through repentance. That is the beginning of Christian life. Now, after you are born again, then you begin to grow, grow in the grace of the Lord. You make spiritual advancement. That is what we are seeing now. Walk worthy of God means, you should walk worthy of his name. You have what a name, that is, you are a Christian. You should, your life should be worthy of his name. See, Desolations, first Desolations, chapter four, verse one. First Desolations, chapter four, verse one. अंतकंतकु अभूरुद्धि पंदवलननी वेडु कुण्ट अंतकंतकु अभूरुद्धि, that is what we are seeing. When we read the word of God, spirit of God punctuates something very important. You should focus on it, otherwise, you may read hundred times, nothing will go into your head. इक्कन इम्पॉर्टेंट एन्ना वचनोलो अंतकंतकु अभूरुद्धि अंतकंतकु अभूरुद्धि More, grow more and more. Love more and more. Live, have faith in God more and more. That means what? Progress. There should be a progression, there should be a progress in our spiritual life. Yesterday, last year I was one year old, now two year old, then three years, four years, now I am eighty-three years old. So like that there would be a progression as in the age, see also in your spiritual life. So as you grow older and older in the spiritual life, you attain to that spiritual maturity. After, nothing affects you. People may develop standards against you, people may talk ill of you, even then you are not moved. That is the mind of Christ. And you approach that, when you are really born again, when you are really remorseful believer. Remorseful, okay, whatever, my emotions, even though, nothing affects you. Even then, the sitting judge conscience in your heart will smite you, then you will say immediately sorry. That is the type of people God wants in the church, remorseful believers. That means, tapu jeshana, oppu kana galgena varu. When the tapu jeshana, oppu kana lena varu, how much time you have? What problem is that? You go, I am second to none, not for that reason. I am not, but never he will ask forgiveness. Why? E G O, what is that? You go. Then it tells you, ahem. Ahem, you approach that, you want to, E G O, E for something, G for something, O is for, what is that? Edging God out. Edging God out. Until the Lord, the Lord, after, none of you, none of you, none of you, none of you. At that, at that, like Christ, you have to humble yourself.
Ah, Baxing is a full wheel. I am a spoke, that is a confession of brother Billy Graham. There is one brother Finley in New York and he said, all the reverence, all the reverence of United States look like babes in front of Baxing said. You know, because there is Baxing's word, there is power. I have been hearing him since nineteen fifty-three, ever since I was born again. Simple word he gives, you know, he has got pancha gacchint, powerful voice, and he gives simple messages and people were touched by his word and many hundreds and hundreds of people were saved. You know, not by some gimmicks many people do these days. You know, simple word he gives and people get convicted and people are saved and they are led to the truth. Brother Billy Graham shows the seeds and go away. Brother Billy, Baxing's burden is not only showing the seeds, but also where will they go? They need an assembly, they need a congregation where they could be fed by the word of God. So, Baxing's burden is church, church vision. That is why he had that vision of the church. What is the vision of the church? Sangadharshana, sangadharshana, matutam. Sangadharshana. Okrodo or aaj baarum gudi karapathu, sangadharshana boisirantam. Very attabhotada. Ayu yala, idhi enna mada. Sangadharshana, what is it? God's will as revealed through his word, that is dharshana. Arno, is that it? It is simple note, but twenty. How, what is sangadharshana? God's will revealed through his word, that is all. So, that means we have to go by the word of God. That is why we recommend read the word of God, meditate the word of God and also do the word of God. Brother Baxing did this thing. That is why God did great work through him. When he came from Canada, when he arrived in Bombay, parents came to receive him and he said, "Betta, you have accepted Christ, but don't talk about it. You maintain it, you have no problem, but don't take his name when you come to Punjab." He said, "How could it be? He is my breath, how can I not talk to him?" He said, "Riyar hamara naa katvaayega," and then, "In Punjab you..." And then, "Namukku gosha, amman, awman porustavu, athleem chesdruvva, nyanthi jipna kanae vinla." Without his name, I cannot live. Then, malam Punjab low pagi atrathani, that has got a lot of value. Pagidil vidi, kodukkaalam edhavittan anta.
That is, it looks on the face of it, quite reasonable. But Bhaksin said, "No, all of us will go." And then we go and pray. And then we pray. And then we pray. And then we pray. Unbelieving believers. He said, "No, all of us will go." And then he went. We were going to the bus station. He said, "We will go there." Ah, now he goes. I never prayed before. I am not a believer. I am not a believer. Ah, I am not a believer. I am not a believer. In the Bible, it says, "If you believe, you will be saved." He is a believer. We are not war much righteous. He said, "Him, he is just." While they are waiting for lunch time, they are getting back to Hebron. Nobody is making food. Then one husband and wife come with a basket full of porridge and aloo curry. All this was done. Uncle, we heard that you all have gone to open air. So God was borned to bring this on JPC. Full of porridge. What a combination. I can't understand. So, this was what he did. See, that is how God has helped him. To trust him, there are innumerable instances. How God proved that is his real God. That is why I am saying, recently, I want to tell you, slight digression from what we are preaching. Recently, I recalled my testimony. Broken to Nejibra. Broken to build a channel. A shiny Sony, Daisy, a shiny. She is doing psychology final year. She had got strange burden to preach the gospel. She is a good singer. And she preaches the gospel through some strips. She is beautiful. She requested along with others that I should record my testimony. And very recently, when we recorded, it is there. On that, I said, like this, you know, situations where you have to trust him. When you trust him, he will never let you down. But you have to trust him. You know, there is a verse in the Bible, central verse of the Bible. What is the central verse of the Bible? 118 verse 8, seven hundred. Psalm 118 verse 8. Ah, man should not know. You have to know. You know, numbers and calculus, somebody said, "This is the central verse." You know, though we don't believe in the numbering and all that, but the central verse of the Bible also says, "Trust not, don't trust any man." When I was very young and my brother Ravi, me and my sister Mani, who were traveling between Medas and Gudur many times, because my mother was admitted in the hospital in Medas. So one day, we arrived in Gudur. Somebody put us in the passenger train. And we crossed the rails and one for long our house in Gudur, Narasimha. We crossed the rails and we are about to enter into the street. And I told, and my sister also told Brother Ravi, "We are scared of dogs who will take care of us." Then my Huna, he said, "I am there with you. I will take care of you. Don't worry." Then my Ravi was going in front, I was behind him. And my sister was behind me. They were going slowly. One dog barked. And we came very close to my brother. And another dog barked. We came much closer to my brother. After some distance, a lot of dogs barked at a time. Then my brother left his place and came behind me and said, "Get out of here." We trusted him. He will take us through. He left his place and he came behind me. He said, "What do we do?" So my uncle, my granny, which is my grandmother, is going. After we have grown, I used to write letters to Nellur, he was there. I was a daily, remember what you have done that day? Don't trust any man. When you need them most, at that time, they will not be there. Trust them all, he will never let you down. In any situation in your home, any situation, whatever may be the situation, whatever you think it is tough, what you have in the Word of God in Mark's Gospel, "To him that believes," "to him that believes," "all things are possible." Thereby, we are brought in the common platform with God himself. For God, nothing is impossible, what have God says. But Lord says, "To him that believes, all things are possible." But that is not happening because we don't have that element of faith. That is why, Lord is speaking to us today. Have faith in God, Lord himself said. And then, in that faith, you should abound more and more, more and more. We have so many examples in the Word of God as to how, when people believed him, how wonderfully God rescued them. You know, the whole chapter of, you know, Levins, in Hebrews 11 speaks of faith and faith and faith. By faith Abel, by faith Iacchus, by faith Noah, by faith Abraham, by faith, you know, Jacob, Israel, you know, Isaac. And Moses, like that, it all begins. And in 1130 says, 1130 Hebrews, "By faith walls of Jericho fell down." No bulldozer, no gada paralu, paral, anything. Six days, six times, seventh day, seven times. I often wonder whenever I read that portion, if today's believer was there in that group, what would have happened? Six days, six times. Seventh day, Monday. Seven days, seven times. And then they were going around. So today's believer. Fifth time, sixth time. They had such faith, superlative faith. By faith, walls of Jericho fell down, just like that. Thirty walls, such walls fell down. Do you believe?
Yes.
If you believe, trust him in every situation in your life. God will never let you down, any, whatever may be the situation. You trust him. I trusted him. And I will tell you maybe tomorrow, how, when I trusted him, how God redeemed me, delivered me in innumerable situations. So he is trusted by God. He is the true and the living God. And there is none beside him. Do you believe? There is none beside him. He is the true and the living God. I say it with my personal experience, but trust him. He will do wonders and miracles. Walls of Jericho fell down by faith. Oh, sorry, British Columbia. They used to have Sunday school teachers appointed by the government. And also, they had inspectors of school, Sunday school also. And religiously, they managed that, Sunday school. Very important for them. Because according to Isaiah 54 verse 13, "The children are to be taught of God." You know, that is what we are taught in the Sunday school. So, for Sunday school, inspectors are senior. Hey, who destroyed the walls of Jericho? Who destroyed the walls of Jericho? She asked, "Who destroyed the walls of Jericho?" She said, "They were destroyed." She said, "Why?" She said, "Why?" She said, "Who destroyed the walls of Jericho?" She said, "They were destroyed." She said, "Not me." She said, "It is not me." She got favor casted. What is this going on? I am talking about walls of Jericho. She said, "What is going on in your class?" She said, "I am not a teacher." She said, "What is going on?" My children are very sincere teachers. He will not do it like that. She said, "That is not good." And I think, ah, so that is how we are living in this world. We don't really trust him, who may say, not our heads. But we don't trust him. Situation, you remember certain occasions in your life where you really trusted him? No, there is always doubt. But trust him, then he will never let you down. So faith, you should advance more and more in faith. That is the first thing. Without faith, you cannot please God. Hebrews 11, but six. Without faith, it is impossible to please God. And we should always please him in order that when he would come again, we will be there with him forever and ever. So may God help us that we may trust him to such an extent where we may totally depend upon him. Totally depend upon him. Then God will do wondrous things. You know, beyond your understanding, beyond your limitation, Lord will do. And the second thing is, you should move from strength to strength. From the bottom, you have to go up. Psalm 84 verse 7. Psalm 84. Psalm 84 verse 7. They go from strength to strength. Every one of them in join appeared before God. In join means house of God. So in join, you go from strength to strength. You know, that means you abound more and more in strength. Now see, Job 17 verse 9. Who are those who will go from strength to strength? We have an answer here. Job 17 verse 9. Ah, see, niraparadalu. Niraparadalu means also righteous people. Niraparadalu. Neetamantulu. Here that has clean hands shall be stronger and stronger. Clean hands. And they are pure. Pure. They are holy. They live in Christ's life. They are blessed. They are blessed. They are blessed. They live in the nature. What is that? From the bottom, you have to go up. Samson is a great example of warning. Samson is a great warning for us. What a mighty man of valor he was. His history, we find in ZJ chapter 13 to 16. 11, 12, 13. ZJ chapter 13, 14, 15, 16, we have the history of Samson. If you read it very carefully, you will understand what mighty things he had done. A lion, young lion, it says, you know, young lion met him. He killed it. How? With bare hands. He did not have any weapon. He did not have any sword. Just by his hands, he just ripped it and he died. Died in his hands. That is the power of God manifested. Because he lived a life of separation. He was an Azren under the Lord. Life of separation, that means holy life. Separated life, and he lived, he enjoyed that power. That means strength is linked with separation. Strength is linked with cleanliness of life. How justly, how holyly, how unblameably we lived among you. First verse, two, verse 11. So that type of life, when you live, you are strengthened more and more where you could come to a situation where, as Paulists define, in Philippians chapter 4 verse 13, "I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me." You know, previous verses, 12 and 13? 11 and 12. 4, 11 and 12. See, when I say something, it goes away. You know, I don't know what you are saying. This is what I can do because Lord strengthens me. None of these things will move me. Whatever may be happening to me, that will not have any effect on me because I trust him. He says many times, "I know whom I believed." Such a testimony, you all should be in a position to give those who are born again and baptized, walking in the base of the Lord. They should say, "I know whom I believed. He will rescue me from every situation." That is a great God. You know, we believe such great God who don't have to worry about any situation. There are innumerable situations. But you trust him, Lord will redeem you, deliver you. Brother Bhaksin gave Motocar verses in 1969. First verse is that Hebrews chapter 13 verse 5, last portion. "For he has said, 'I will never leave you nor forsake you.'" First verse, 1969 Motocar verse. Second verse is Isaiah 41 verse 10. Isaiah 41 verse 10, where it says, "Fear not, I am with thee." Third verse is ZJ chapter 6 verse 12. "Oh mighty man of valor, fear not, I am with thee." These are the three verses. I and my wife were claiming these promises for us, for our families. Though we also ask our individual promises in our prayer, we also used to remember these Motocar verses for the universal church brother Bhaksin had given to us. I and my wife, who used to, I got married in 1968, June. And she was pregnant at that time, in April 1969, nine months pregnant. And doctor said, "At any time, you can bring her." And then I was living in Anantapur, engineering college. Cut off from the city of Anantpur, some 300 kilometers. During the day, there is Jatka Bandi, Basu, and so the night, AM, no transport at all. You have to be on your own if she gets pain. Then I asked my officer commanding, 11, Tangarat. I was in NC, I said, "My wife is pregnant, tonight I need a vehicle. Please sanction of his car." Then there is a provision, so he granted car for me. Anytime that I need, driver should make itself available. And every day evening, when this driver goes home, you should deposit the key with the military man, who are also living near my house in engineering college. So every day, that driver will give you the keys and go home. Seventeenth of night, 17th night, April 1969, she developed pains. And then I went to that military man. "Come on, take the car, let us go. I have to take my wife." He said, "Today he has not given me the keys," he said. Every day he was giving. See, every day he was giving and going. That day, he did not give me the keys. Give him the keys. Then I knew my testing time has begun. Lord is testing my faith. I thought like that. Then I said, "Let us go to the car." Then he said, "Tell me," and he said, "I am telling you, let us go to the car." I knew, I and my wife, we have been claiming these promises. You know, very seriously, we used to pray. Now I said, when that fellow said, "No keys." I remember those promises. "Lord, I have been praying. You know my condition now. I do not know how." Now my prayer was this. "I do not know how, but you will help me. You will help me." That was my prayer. And then I was praying in my heart like this, "Let us go to the car." So we all walked together, they were rumbling. What should we do there? Then I went there, I closed my eyes again, I was praying. "Oh Lord, help," that is my prayer. "Oh Lord, help me," I was praying. And then this man, after verse I was told, this man went to the security guard and asked for matchbox. And then he took matchsticks. He opened the car by rod, you know, door. And then with four matchsticks, he kept in the reverse order, you know, in the ignition. And he twisted and car started. You try. If you misplace your keys, take four matchsticks and do it. By faith, it will start, I am telling you. I had such faith. You know, I am not a human. You know, I am not a human. And then God will do it, but I do not know how. Innumerable things are there. That is why, step by step, my faith, my confidence, my trust on him multiplied more and more. That is why I am saying. It should multiply more and more. That is how you make advancement in your spiritual life. Otherwise, we will not be able to do anything. In this, we will not be able to do anything. We have to increase in your faith more and more. Vehicle started. Then I opened, "Oh Lord," I praised the Lord. Then that man is a nominal Christian, David Raj. Then I said, "David Raj, don't leave the torch." "Don't leave the torch." Then he said, "Trust him, he will hold on." He said, "Leave it." So, we should hold on to those things. Very firmly. Then, then what else? And then we took my wife and we entered the hospital at about 4 o'clock in the morning, slowly, slow. And we went, by the time I was crying profuse. "Oh Lord, how great the work." I was captivated at what happened by that situation. And I thanked them and my wife. And same day evening, I was blessed with the Lord. So the wonderful things have happened. Whenever I think of it, it is mind-boggling. How did this happen? How does it go? Who gave him the word of the word, the matchbox? How could he think that he can start a bar with matchbox? Then what happens? When you pray, mysteriously, God will answer. He is afraid, but he is right. But God spoke to Isaiah, he spoke to Isaiah. He is afraid, but God spoke to Isaiah and said, "Tell him, I have extended our good to you." Then what he does? But we have to be manate open of prayer. If you have faith, what will you do? If you have faith, what will you do? You will pray. If this brother can help me, if I have that confidence only, I will go on. I know you will help. So, if you have trusted God, you should go into prayer. Then how God has helped you. And my faith got multiplied in several situations. That is why, out of my experience, I am saying, taking a treatment. Your past experience of past faithfulness will give you assurance for the future. That should happen, that more and more God will do wonders and miracles. It has happened in my life. So trust him, he will never let you down. But when you have faith, you will have strength. You will have strength, that is, strength is linked with separation. In Samson's life, as long as he lived a life of separation, he did exploits. 10,000 soldiers captured him. They thought, "Now Samson is finished." Then he finished that. With job, he was a farmer. He was a farmer. Think about it. He was a farmer. He was a farmer. He was a lot of mighty act. And he died. And then 1,000 times you tried to stick your hand. I think maybe 50 times. You know, 1,000 times, he destroyed you. So that is the power of God, manifestation of the power of God. And also, we find 300, Taktar and Akal, 300 Pakshas, he fought a whole of them. I don't know how he fought. 300 Pakshas, tied their chains, lit them with fire and sent them onto the Philistines. You know, that is the power that he enjoyed. When he was in city of Gaza, when people thought, "Now we have captured him, Philistines." Then what happened? In the midst of the night, he took the gates of Gaza, he followed and walked up the mountain, that is the power of God. They would not do it. But in the bottom of Jaleel, he lost the battle. When it became boiling, the last of the rest, last of the rest, destroyed Samson. Samson Agonistes, one, John Milton wrote one poem, one book, poetry he wrote on the life of Samson. Very called, The Samson Agonistes. We had it in our PhD. In one life, he explains his character. "Oh, you putance of mind, if a body is strong." You understand that? "Oh, you putance of mind, if a body is strong." You know, he was a man. 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 He lost everything. And we find him in a very pitiable state. In 16 chapter verse 19, it says, "Lord departed from him. Strength went from him." And he is grinding in the tigger house. His eyes were put out. 19 verse, 20 verse, 22. Very tragic notes concerning Samson. Such a man of valor, power of God, everything he lost because of the last of the rest, last of the rest. So gravitational pull is putting us on to the ground level. But we have to work against the gravitational pull and fly iron and iron. How does the Euro plane go into the air? Euro plane, how does it go? He was a driver. Now, we will talk about it. He was a driver. He was a driver. He was a driver. That is what he should explain. But what is the reason? How does it fly? It is because of aerodynamics. Aerodynamics works again, the gravitational pull of the earth and lift the plane, you know, it goes on the runway. So, everything with people of different weights. And there are some 300 people. And luggage, everything, tons of weight. Twice like I did. You know, bold. Whenever I fly, I think, "How does it fly?" Because of aerodynamics. We have also spiritual dynamics to get to work against the gravitational pull of the earth. Saturn always wants to bind us to the earth. Earthly level, earthly attitude, you know, unspiritual attitudes. But it's only by spiritual dynamics. What are those spiritual dynamics? Add 2/2. Simple, what is that? Attitude is supposed to drop, same, karma, breaking of bread, my experience. I want to tell you, you are very sincere in these four things. Continually devoted to the Word of God. Continually devoted to the intelligence. Continually devoted to the breaking of bread, according to the Word of God. Continually devoted to the prayer life, that will lift you higher and higher and higher in your faith. That is what is needed. Shall we pray? Our loving Heavenly Father, our gracious and wonderful God, thank you for the word, Christian words. Help us to know more and more of the Word. Lord is rising tomorrow. And help us to thy God, thank you, Christian words, who will be satisfied by the capture of my house. Tell them that whatever we have to change, we will keep it to our Lord and we trust thee more and more, so that we may be a refreshing part of it. Come to our Lord's work and expect the great things to happen in our tragic joint prayer house. For our watch over our home. Praying thanksgiving in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Closing prayer, we have dinner fellowship. At 10:30 sharp, worship service. Like that, break. About 10:30. Tomorrow. 4 o'clock. At 4 o'clock, next prayer and start. Otherwise, you are a liar. So, next prayer. So, we will start and we will close on 7:30. You can actually wait this time, but still you finish. Please God, now you go with the order of prayer and then meditation. And we have dinner and then we discuss from this place. You chase, you are, you set up, even if you are. I will disturb. So, our work will be very easy. Okay, it might lack a matter. So, please God. On Monday, Tuesday, church prayer. So part of that acts 2/4. Monday, church prayer. Wednesday, sisters. Very significant. Sisters from various places. Prayer. 8:00 to 9:30. Sisters pray at night. But it could be possible inside by faith and by grace of Lord Jesus Christ. Thursday, 8:30 to 9:30. Third of Friday, off night prayer. Nowadays, we are gathering here. January, last year. Last year, two months, we gathered here, very joyful time to pray for many, many requests which are happening in the world and even our own request prayer points. Like first Saturday. At least 125 to 150 prayer points. Morning 5 o'clock, evening 7. At the end of the week, we will have worship service, 10:30 AM. So please take part in this ministry and let us grow in faith and let us work for the Lord. Now uncle will close the prayer and with the benediction, we are going to close this meeting tonight.
Shall we pray? Our loving heavenly Father, our gracious and honourable God, we bow on the presence as it draws the day much in the other being, thankful for the glory of the one who is with us. Thank you for the time, the honour of the Lord, his presence to honor upon the world. For your thoughts that have been shared, they go very deep into our hearts and remind us again how we must have peace and confidence of thee, so that we will work hard and be able to strive together upon this Christian 157 and that land of the earth, who may be found rich in thy sight to be free for the ever and ever. Thank you for the joy and the sweet here, Lord, and others, Lord, and that's all, everything. So we strongly believe that we will change them through even in coming days, as I trust thee, as I depend upon thee, as I lean upon thee, three want to think, we know what you would do. Thank you for the servants who are having in the graveyard, by them, by their love and by the power, so that they may be able to strike together upon this Christian 157 and bring glory to the kingdom. Much more, prepare for tomorrow's ministry as well. As we discuss, help us that we may reach our respective destination safely and come again tomorrow morning. And help that you may have a restful day, the good one of rest this night. But it is unlikely, break of the tomorrow, to do their work upon today. Come to the hall of the driving and also pray for those who are not well in office anyway. Try somebody to give them a reward of the reward. Come to the hall of the driving and expect in great things to happen on our behalf, as we trust thee, so that we follow thee. Pray with thanksgiving in Jesus' precious name.
Amen.
Now, in the grace of our honour towards Savior Jesus Christ, Lord God, come in with the Holy Spirit, keep with us now and more evermore. Amen.